Good evening, everyone. This is an informational meeting, a discussion on the chapter sixty-one A process for sale or non-sale conversion of chapter sixty-one properties. Joining us are the agricultural commission representatives, conservation commission, a historical commission representative is not here, park and rep commission is not here. And the planning board is here. And CPC is here, community and preservation. So, what else do I need to say? Anyway, that's it. It is six ten and at the desk out there, we have the proposed draft of the process. And I think you've all seen this before, you were consulted along the way. And I guess we want to know if anybody sees problems, concerns. Does it work? What are your thoughts? On it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just in the past, sometimes things haven't gone all the way through the channels and offered to all the boards or then scrutinized by all the boards. So just maybe there's a checklist that goes around to show that it's been passed through all the boards.
Uh, there is a proposed. There is a proposed checklist that, well, well, first of all, the it suggests that the C A O would be responsible for notifying certain boards. First of all, the landowner is responsible for notifying.
Which ones?
Landowner must by certified mail or hand delivered with receipt notify the select board, board of assessors, planning board, conservation and state forester. In this proposal, it is suggested that someone right now has proposed the C A O would also notify the agricultural commission. CPC. His store and historical commission. So those are the three added. And and a checklist that they that the C I O would attest that she notified. That is not required for mass general law. But it is included in here.
As well open that, could you my name and address now, man?
We know where you live.
Did you all?
Just your name is.
If you all sign in, we can cut it there if you don't mind on your way out.
Anyway, just kind of following on that, I think not to speak for you, Chris, I think it was not so much in the chapter sixty-one A process, but in getting this document in the hands of all the people that need to have and need to act on it. We should have a checklist for that.
Well, that I think, as I said, for mass general law, I think those are the intended boards to act on it, but we have added those to this. For input. Obviously for discussion. Um, as far as in the past, how it went, um, as you had said, sometimes our notice has been very short. In that window as well.
Question to that. So so you and I had had those conversations where you may get a call before that someone is going to be closing tomorrow, right? And there's really never been any recourse that you've that you've involved, right? You haven't stopped that in the past, or I don't want to say you the town, but what is the what can the town do if you get a call today saying someone's closing next Monday?
Right.
You tell the attorney, it can't close because you haven't had the hundred and twenty days.
But that notice is coming from the town.
That notice of deficient notification comes from the town.
Just want, I just want to make sure, because again, you know, I know in practice it it hasn't been applied in the past. I and I don't see that scenario changing moving forward, to be quite honest with you.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, buyers and sellers are going to enter into contracts and everybody's want to go to, going to want to go to close as quickly as possible, right? And the town's going to get notified, so it's all about our, is the town going to moving forward, always going to pause and tell those departments, the buyer and seller, we're, we want a full hundred and twenty days, how is that going to work?
If I may. Um, so I've been doing this for a while too. I came from another agricultural town. And if I was to get a right of first refusal for a parcel, there is no way that I would say, okay, we'll sign off on it tomorrow. Be- because there is a checklist for the boards and we should, if we don't, I'll create it, but we have a checklist that goes with the right of first refusal. So when the board of select, the select board receive it, they see that all of the other boards have already signed off on it. So that is imperative that the board sees that the required boards have already seen it. And then they, you know, there's, there's time here that is you know, from the law, from the state law that allows, you know, it's like too bad, you can't close. I, that's just the way it is. It's, it's the ownness is on the the parcel owner or the seller or whoever they are. And if they don't have a real estate agent or they don't know what they're doing, then the process is just going to take longer.
It's, it says, if the notification from the landowner is deficient, the town has thirty days from receipt of notification to give the landowner written notice thereof, in which case the landowner must then resubmit their notice of intent, restarting the hundred and twenty day period. So that step would need to be designated to a person receiving that notification from the, in that case, from the attorney. So that would need to be assigned to someone.
And ultimately, it is the select words decision for however it goes, whether sale or non-sale. Um, and I think that uh, you know, there, there would never be, I don't, if you put your land in chapter land, then you know how difficult or how much it work it is to get it out. And so for somebody to say, I didn't know the process, it would be, you should have, so.
And they have an attorney.
And they have an attorney who is probably a land use attorney, I hope. So, you know, I, I don't see an excuse in that sense. Oh, I, it's not my meeting, but you.
Um, Juliet Hanson, um, so who's going to shepherd this um, through the town to through, through the town offices? So you talked about how it's supposed to go. Is you're supposed to get an approval from certain of these committees? But how's how, who shepherds that through to make sure the process on our side is set?
So I think that would be part of our responsibility, you know, in, into the select board office and, uh, you know, we wouldn't, I wouldn't bring it to the select board until I had those checklists that the other boards have seen, you know, that's complete, that's complete to the select board. Once the other required board have acknowledged it or.
And, and there is a timeframe written in here where it goes to the next select board meeting to make that announcement that there is um, an intent. And then it would be scheduled following that to have a meeting with those relevant boards. So you would be notified, you would come in and have that, this kind of discussion.
So what I would do in the past is um, ensure that all these boards had it on their agenda for the next agenda and try to you know, get it to where it coincides with the next select board's agenda. So, you know, that we have them, you know, however, the meetings are scheduled that they are, you know, I'm watching them in between the next select board meeting to make sure that that right of first refusal is on all of their agenda.
And, and if it's deficient and we sent it back, we're not in that crunch to hurry up and try to coordinate all the boards to meet in, in a short timeframe, we start over. And, and we know about it because we sent it back. It's going to take them some time to get it back to us in good order.
May I? Real quick, then.
Go ahead, sure.
I just think you have to put it in context with other process and procedure that we have in town where stuff crosses boards, happens all the time. Used car license, somebody comes in, they get approval from the select board, but it needs planning board approval as part of the process. Other things that have to cross boards, that cross conservation and cross planning or board of health and something else. So ultimately, it's the by statute, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but um, and anyone is statutorily, it's your select board is responsible for it. The C A O as the agent of the select board in, in charge of administration of the town day to day would kind of shepherd the process and, but it's up to those boards to act within their timeframe. And that's why there's kind of a um, you know, kind of passive approval. If we don't hear back from you, we're going to assume you're not interested. We can't, we're not going to be, hey, conservation, did you do this yet? Did you do this yet? We're not.
Or we missed that window.
Yeah, you, and you have sufficient time even for a board that meets monthly, they have plenty of time to, to, to act on this. Um, that's how I see it. So when I was reading, you know, reading through some of this, you know, this I was trying to parallel it with other processes that we have that do cross boards, even warrant articles, right? The planning board sends something to the planning board to have a hearing and then send it back to put something um, back on the, on the warrant or what have you. So um, that type of thing.
Now, pick the new topic. How is fair market value determines is that?
Final appraisal.
Appraisal.
Right. I just want to think of right now, homes are praised, they're front of the market and they're sold for that much over what they're being put up the market for. So I was just curious to sell that here. Putting more than such. So it's just what the praise.
Limits our buying power as well. Yep.
Yeah.
Then we're not held over a barrel to see what the highest bid is out there at home.
No, 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 it's.
That's the right sure refuses all about is allowing the town to buy it at fair market value of select board.
And there's three shots in an appraisal. They didn't like the first, if they didn't like our first one, they can go get their own. If we don't like it, we agree on a mutual one. And we take it or we walk away. So there's three shots.
Oh, there is. Hi, Marissa, how are you?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Marissa Gobregon, one twenty-six South Loomis. Uh, not representing any boards tonight, but just a question as a member of the public, having been on a couple of the boards mentioned tonight. Planning board and select board, there's a lot of back and forth, obviously, as uh, Mr. Mowgli mentioned, but some of the other boards. And I was thinking like the historical commission, agriculture, uh, even conservation, they all work at very different paces. And I'm wondering if the select board and the C A O have any suggestions for the chairs of those various commissions um, in terms of how to best educate their respective boards on this matter. Thank you.
Well, we're certainly pretty knowledgeable on it, you and I.
I, I wouldn't want to micromanage other boards, um, but I certainly wouldn't want this process to take a long time. We, you know, we're not looking to keep that on our desk for months and months. So I would certainly encourage, if you're not going to have a meeting, please hold a special meeting at least to recognize this issue, you know, so we can get, I can get it back to the select board. Um, but
But your notification would include due date.
Yeah.
For them to get it back as well. I mean, that's pretty standard.
Does anyone know? Since this is kind of an informational meeting, anyone know how many pieces of property are in sixty, chapter sixty-one in the town of South?
I do, but not off the top of my head. I just sent it to her. Seventy, I believe, between sixty and seventy at last check.
Something like that.
It was, I was kind of leading the witness. I thought it was around seventy-five. So, cool.
Well, it's come out.
So, well, okay, but my point, I, I think is it shouldn't be hard, that hard to either get from the assessors or to have that list. And as a work item for boards and commissions is, take a look at that list and kind of prioritize those and have a little bit of a discussion even, or, you know, we can make a colored map. And, you know, Marissa, I know you and I have had this discussion in the past too, is put together your wish list, if you will, of hey, these are the top five. If any of these come out, this is the hill I'm going to die on. And there wouldn't be a lot of discussion amongst the board because you could do this annually or biannually or whatever and say, okay. If this one comes out, we want to do it. And maybe we have there's even a opportunity to have more of a round table of more than one border commission and we could all agree on our top five or top three. And then, okay, one of those does come in. Well, okay, we can rally the troops and bring all the people to the table to figure out how we can make something happen if we want, want it to happen and maybe even there's a bottom five or bottom ten to go, okay, if those come in, we, we've already kind of discussed that. Okay, that, that's not something that's in play.
I believe that was an action I put forward under master plan committee. To do exactly what we talked about.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we had, I, I was bringing it forward because I, not everybody was in, in that, but you're a hundred percent right. And this way you can kind of have a wish list, if you will, or, or some kind of prioritization and a kind of a pre-discussion about it so that no matter what the timeframe is on one of these, it never seems to be enough. So if you're starting from zero, it's going to, it's going to seem even worser. So if you had that list in front of you, thank you, Julia, um, you know, if you have if you have that list in front of you and now you can, you know, we can start to have a better, more fluid discussion around where we would want to go with one of these. And even from the select board too, because we would have that list. And maybe, you know, we, I know it was done in the past, it was done when I was on the planning board at least, and I, I'm pretty sure since I've been on the select board was hey, boards and commissions, and it wasn't even limited to this group, it was, it was sent to every board and commission. Hey, do you have this wishlist or, you know, these are the properties? What would they be? Because there may be ones that even, you know, just to go afield of chapter sixty-one, there may be other properties out there not in sixty-one.
Say that.
That if they ever came on the market, we, we might want to have a discussion with that landowner. We should be talking to those people now. So as part of estate planning, or even if it's just the over Murphy's donuts. Hey, but if you ever are going to sell, please reach out to the town first, or let's have a conversation so that those things are in play. Because.
I think originally there might have been one of the first open space recreation plans. We did try to do that kind of thing. Um, it's a long time ago. So I'm sure things are changed, everything.
Sure.
Um, I think that's a great idea to be revisited, would be a great time.
So I, I would, I would take that as an action for us. Um, is to query the assessors to say, hey, give us the, the parcels that are in sixty-one today, seventy-five, sit on one page, maybe two. Okay, and then we can, you know, the, give, we can certainly send that out with, you know, as we refine this, send this out to those, all the boards and commissions to say, hey, these are them and where will we go from here?
And why would we want them?
So I have some historical information. Nine years ago, you did discuss the uh current use tax programs. And I looked at all the properties that were in the program as uh, data from the assessor's office in two thousand fifteen. And I looked at uh, the different programs, the percentage of tax forgiveness that they were getting. So for forestry, uh, ninety-four, the ninety-six percent of their tax, normal tax was forgiven. And I came up with a value which was available. So annually, uh, in two thousand fifteen, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars was uh, forgiven in taxes. So that was, of course, ten years ago, David. The program is used quite a bit by agriculture, of course. They're getting between sixty and ninety-eight percent reduction in their taxes. About uh, recreation, about seventy-five percent reduction. And Doug, your, you know, your suggestion was good because you have that information, it's just a matter of processing and see the priority. Also, there was an exercise done. And they have done the planner at that time, we developed some criteria and pass it around, I think, to add conservation and planning. So you could rank uh, the various properties based on that criteria. And the one that came out with the highest number, planning board has had and has a list. I don't know how many are on there, but uh, the key is how nimble is the town to move on that. Once we know that there's a property we want, how can the town come up? With at least an initial fund. And I don't know if there's been talk about setting, setting up an account where uh, you have some money available, I don't know, five hundred thousand, something uh, whatever to move on.
I think that's part of the master plan and, and just to add to that, Marcus, come right back to you. But I think one of the things that I learned from the master plan process and I think there's a lot of different perspectives on what makes a property worth potentially acquiring or putting into A P R or, or what have you. And to be honest, Dave, I mean, one of the things that Dave brought up during um, I'm pretty sure it was a master plan processor, it was some other conversation he and I had was, you know, uh, was wildlife kind of, I don't know what the right term is, wildlife corridor, corridor, that's always connectivity corridor, right? Never crossed my mind, it's not my area of expertise at all, but that's a, you know. So, you know, one might look at a piece of property and out of those seventy-five and this is little sliver and you go, you know, ah, it's seems insignificant, but it's not to a border commission or to someone who has an absolute interest in, in that. We have two pieces here and here, and this is the connector.
Or the bear.
You know, well, or the bear, right? Good point. So, but that's, you know. But that's a good, you know, and, and, you know, perhaps that might be one that would be easily achievable. Um, or more easily achievable than a, you know, a ginormous parcel. Um, just, it was just food for thought for me and I have something, you know, in talking to Dave that, you know, I learned from him and, and what he was talking about. So, Mr. Pratt.
So pertaining to that, through community preservation, we can set up an account um, for just this thing. Uh, Acton has done it. They added more money to it over the years. Like they started in twenty sixteen to create that funds. So it does have to go to town meeting, of course, and you guys should be bringing it to community preservation. But you can't set up the funds and you can't add more to it as the years go on. Or just ask for that thing.
I, I think we're going a little north of this, but that's intriguing. How, how would that work? So you would, by town meeting, you'd appropriate funds to an account? And then how would you further appropriate that? You, or you have to go back to town meeting? Right?
It's already been put aside for that purpose. So it's there and it does not have to go back to town meeting after that because it's already been appropriated through town meeting.
And it doesn't name a particular parcel, it would just be.
Thing, then it's then, then that decision is CPC's not the town's to purchase a particular property.
No, I think you could probably work, warrant, you could have the article be by a vote of you could delegate the authority either to CPC or to another board or, or some other, I don't know.
Or, I mean, it would probably be going through this whole process to decide if the town wants to acquire it or not. But eventually it will become your decision because you are the board who makes the final decision.
I'll have to look at, I, that's interesting.
I have, there's several.
Yeah.
Look up Acton.
Acton?
Acton.
Okay. That's cool.
Yeah.
Because that, you know, that's always been one thing. It always comes up, right? And somebody used the word nimble, I think that's the perfect word. The, the one thing the town of Southwick or any town is, is not, is nimble, right? So someone calls us, hey, this property is going to be for sale. We really want to buy it. Great, when, when do they want to close? Thursday, or, you know, you know, a month from Thursday, even a hundred and twenty days from Thursday, it's going to be a trick to, to actually do that.
Or even gift it.
If you want me to read, I can read one of the excerpts from one of the times they did it.
Sure.
Says the money in this account is used for property appraisals, site inspections, title searches and other necessary items for exploring and evaluating open space acquisition. And preservation opportunities for advancing them in town meeting action. The fund may also be used for legal fees, conservation, restoration expenses, steward of stewardship endowments, town meeting. The town meeting had approved community preservation funds to this account in the past, so it's able to be done.
Did it say anything about the purchase of the house?
Um.
It was all ancillary.
Yeah. While you're looking for that, I think that, like even under the.
It's just very general too. I mean, it says funds advance open space acquisition activities during intervals between town meetings.
But that would be preparation for acquisition. I'm going to read it because it's intriguing because I think you would have to delegate just financial prudence would, I don't see how town meeting could authorize a blanket allocation of money to a acquire lands that haven't been specifically identified yet. I'm going to look at it, it's, yeah, correct.
They've done it through community preservation.
You know, because even if we wanted to call a special just for a singular purpose, which the town loathes to do anyway. Um, it doesn't, it's not that quick. It takes, it takes months.
Yep.
Ms. Poehler?
So, uh, conservation commission um, is allowed to have a conservation and CPC money, at least for the open space portion, is allowed to be put into the fund specifically for acquisition of property so long as there's a C R attached to it and all the other directives that come with purchasing a property through CPC. So the, so I'm not sure if Chris is talking about a separate fund, but we can set up a uh, conservation fund specifically for this purpose. So we have that um, money available to actively on acquisition of property. And I believe when that money is voted during town meeting to be put into this fund, all we need is a vote from the conservation.
Novel. But that would be, but that would be for something that would have a C R attached. So if it was some historical but, you know, a, a piece that was some, have more historical value, for example, probably wouldn't be eligible for action under that.
And right.
Right, right. Yeah. It's worth looking into and.
Here's mine, it's just set aside seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for their um, open space set aside funds. That's one of their CPC.
I think it's interesting too, that's focused on open space. One of the properties, I believe, that's on the planning board list is off, it's west of South Loomis Street, it has potential for a well site for a water system infrastructure. So how do we you know, narrow in on a parcel or purchase a parcel that maybe is not open space related and more planning infrastructure, you know, for a road, potential future bypass construction. Uh, that kind of.
Yeah, that might be a different fund.
But it still doesn't make the land any less worthy, just a different purpose. And Marissa, do you still have your hand up or is that, is that a new one? Okay, sorry.
I just wanted to, to dovetail into the comment that uh, Chris and Sabrina made about both the conservation fund and then the CPC fund that he's referring to in Acton. I'm familiar with um, a few communities across the Commonwealth that have that when I was researching for this protocol. And what I read in the case studies for those particular funds is that like the C A O said, they're more ancillary and basically they're intended to give the town leverage as a potential buyer with the landowner. They're not necessarily earmarked in any way, shape or form. Um, unless there's a town vote for that, for any of that money in those funds to go towards acquisition because there is the possibility, once you are in this protocol by state law, where if you show as a town to the landowner that you do have some interest in buying this land. If you're still within the one hundred day, a hundred and twenty day period and you make this offer, including doing all legwork necessary, such as a survey and appraisal, that can be enough. And that has been proven in some towns, that can be enough to let the landowner know that the town is serious. So just getting all of the leg, legwork done in anticipation of the town meeting and then hoping that town meeting goes the right way so that that vote is an approval for then acquisition. That has been successful in the past for some communities where they've done, you know, they, they, they've spent the money, they've shown the landowner, okay, we've actually put some town money to use towards getting everything, you know, checked, all the Ts crossed and Is dotted so that we can purchase this land. We just then have to wait for the next town meeting, whenever that is in our community, for the final approval. And um, that has been enough historically for some landowners to say, hey, you know what? Let's go past the one twenty days. We're still in that, but you've shown a goodwill, there's a bona fide offer potentially. That can replace the bona fide offers, what I'm saying. So that's at the discretion of the landowner ultimately, so that's why those funds exist. There is a differentiation though to be made for sure. They're not acquisition funds, they're just meant to give the town leverage, that's it. Thanks.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Other thoughts? Any loopholes?
I'm sure. I had a conversation with Mass Department of Agriculture, I had a call for resources last week regarding chapter sixty-one properties. And it was Mary Wells, Mary Wells, who's the office administrator, was a lot just saying that. Chapter sixty-one has been around for a while and there's been changes to the, to the. Bylaws of the law over the years and that when lawyers get into looking at deeds. Um, the current law may not apply to properties that have been into their sixty-one A for decades. They may have signed up under different terms. So that not all properties are necessarily equal, but that will come out from the deed search with the terms. So. I don't know what she meant by that.
There may be some deep restrictions.
So, yeah, be nimble, right?
Well, it's also a good reason, I think in, in recent past practice with the town. When we adopt. Certain sections of mass general law, we're very clear as to what we're adopting in our local bylaw. Because it's great when you adopt some chapter, you know, chapter and verse of mass general law. And then three weeks after town meeting, the state legislature actually changes that law underneath you. And now you've adopted a statute, the town meeting really had no intention of. Adopting, but you've adopted it by number, and so you go look up the number and it's not what you, not what you adopted. Either by, you know, small changes or sometimes ginormous changes. So even, and even back to the, uh, some of the cannabis legislation, when we put zoning in place for that. Our, our zoning bylaw is very explicit as to what we're doing, rather than just adopting blanket. The general law, because the, the Cannabis Control Commission and the legislature have been. Changing that seem, seemingly hourly as that heads into receivership. But that's why you have, you're very specific in your town law and you're right. People could have gone into sixty-one A when it was, it had this criterion and this and that, the other, the land may no longer meet it. Or the conditions for removal may have changed, who knows? And without doing all that research as to what that is, who knows? Good point.
Okay.
Anyone else in person, online?
What, what would be? What's, so what's the next steps? All the commissions need to review this, like agriculture commission saw this document sometime ago.
It's been updated.
Right. So town council makes changes.
No, it's been updated this week.
Yeah, so. Well, we should look at it again, right? Um, make sure we know what.
And then we are going to discuss this one more time with, we have a couple of things to check. Legal wise, mass general law technicalities. Um, we'll discuss it again, incorporate those or strike what we need to. And we would take a vote whether to adopt or not this process.
Just to clarify.
We're not changing mass general law, we're just putting a written process.
This may or may not be the plan.
Correct.
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 And we've been carrying this under old business on the select board agenda for some time.
I know it's been a while.
And, you know, to get to, and we had wanted to have a, a public discourse, which we're having tonight to get. Take in input and feedback on this. And, um, you know, I had pushed to get this passed. Once we got past town meeting and we also have, obviously we had a vacancy in the C A O position to get that built and take some input there too. Um, so here we are and that's where we are. So this is going to come up weekly until we adopt a policy. Um, one way or another, either we, we vote to take, take on some kind of form of this or, or elect not to, but we're going to. We're going to continue to discuss it in an open session until we're there. And the, you know, the chair sets the agenda. So he's been carrying it, I carried it when I was the chair and the current chair has held it on, on the agenda to try to bring this to some kind of conclusion.
There are not a lot of open questions left on it, I think, um, so it shouldn't take too long to get those resolved. Um, and it should help the other boards and commissions be a little more nimble. They'll have documents, they'll have timelines to deal with as well.
And, and I took a note. To make sure that we distribute the list of those seventy-six properties, this should be simple to get. And then distribute those to the boards and commissions. And, you know, one thing I did take out of this and I took a note for myself is, it's not, apparently it's not. From the protocol side of things, it's boards and commissions, but maybe there should be some others on this list for notification. A, a good example, I had Marcus brought up, maybe D P W needs to be on there so that in case a well site comes up and the water commissioners, right? Maybe they're not able to trigger it, but at least they can notify. The town from those seventy-six parcels to let, put that on notice with the C A O and the select board to say, hey. If this piece ever does come up, we, this would be a good well site. Just as an example. Um, but for the rest of the protocol, we're just going to work this through to the end. And if any, any border commission member or border commission as a whole wants to send something back to the select board. For further consideration, please do, because we're going to carry this every Monday until we come to some conclusion on this. Ask all. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.